Okay. We're going to get started now. I'm just going to quickly introduce myself. Hi, I'm Erica Brown. I'm the publisher and editor of The Manchester Cricket. This is Colleen Murdock. She is the head of Community Affairs at the Greater Cape Town Chamber of Commerce. And over there, Mark Lynch, you all know. He is the Essex Division Head for the Greater Cape Town Chamber of Commerce. Welcome to the 2025 Meet the Candidates Essex Board of Selectmen Race Forum. We're excited to do this. Thank you very much. We want to thank, first of all, 1623 and the Essex Elementary School. This has been fantastic. It's a great space and it's a really good format. What we're going to do today is we're going to hear from the candidates themselves. This isn't a matter of introducing themselves to the community. Everyone should be familiar with the two candidates who are running. But we're going to learn a little more about specifically why they're running, what issues are the most important to them, and what do they think about the future of Essex, and how do they think they can impact that. We are going to go through a format of question and answers in the beginning. We already shared the questions with the candidates. And the reason why we did that was two reasons. Number one, it's fair to do it that way. That way, each candidate has the best opportunity to actually not waste anybody's time, and they can put their best foot forward in an equal and fair way and a productive way. It's also just good because we're taping this with 1623. People are going to be watching this on YouTube and on 1623's three Cape Town television channels and on the Chamber website, on the Cricket website, et cetera. And we want people at home to be able to listen in a way that doesn't, you know, that they can get some good content and they can understand and they can become educated. So, the election is Monday, May the 11th, no, Tuesday, May the 11th, 12th?
Monday the 12th.
Monday the 12th.
Monday the 12th. Thank you very much. The polls open up at 7:00 a.m. It's at the Essex Public Safety Building. And we hope everybody really engages, they learn, they vote. So, thank you very much. And I'm going to turn it over to Colleen, who is going to kick us off with the first question.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here. Just want to remind everyone that this is being recorded by 1623. And we wanted to start off tonight with an opportunity for the candidates to introduce themselves. We know they're both well-known in the community of Essex, but we wanted to give them an opportunity to present themselves to you and also to bring up what they think is the single most challenging issue facing the town right now. So, without further ado, Annie, if you want to start off and kick us off with the introduction?
Sure, thanks. Annie Cameron. I live on Pickering Street. I have lived in Essex for 28 years or so. I have four kids and am married to Gordon Martin.
I'm a mom.
Oh, sorry. Sorry, Tyler. So, I work at Ebsco. I'm a senior product manager there. I work in the school and public library market. Very happy there. I hope that we can continue to fund libraries and keep my job. So, I'm running to change the tone and the tenor of leadership in Essex. I don't feel that we're in a united community, and I feel that many are feeling overlooked and disrespected. And given the challenges we face, it's not an environment where I think we can get things done. So, here's what I bring to the table. I've been volunteering for the town of Essex for more than 25 years. I started with the School Regionalization Subcommittee in the late 1990s. I served on the PTO, School Committee, for about 11 years, the Middle and High School and Memorial School Building Committees, the Strategic Planning Committee, Affordable Housing Trust, and currently I'm the Chair of the Manchester Essex Education Fund. I serve on the Board at Action, Inc. I'm a member of the High School Council, and I serve on the New Essex Elementary School Building Committee. I care deeply about this town. And it may seem from my experience that I'm only about schools, and I just want to tell you that I'm not a one-trick pony. I can do more than that. And I want people to understand that when you represent the school or the town at school events, you or school opportunities, you have to represent everybody that's in this room. So, we always think about that, and I want you to understand that about school committee service, that you really are representing the town and trying to fulfill the obligation we have for education. So, I've said before that Essex, I think, is very much a stone soup kind of community. No one has anything until you ask them. And when you ask them, it flows very generously. And I have been somebody who's asked a lot of people in this room, and I've asked a lot of businesses, and everyone has delivered for me, always. And I thank you for that, and I think our community has benefited from that, and especially our kids. So, I want to create an environment where we're all working together to solve challenges and where neighbors care for one another, where every voice is heard, and where we build a strong future rooted in kindness. I do want to think about some key priorities, and one of them is clarifying the role of the select board. I want to define what falls under the board's responsibilities and support the work and the autonomy of co-equal boards and our professional employees without overstepping. I want to support local businesses. We need to revisit the policies that hold our business community back, especially as it relates to entertainment. We have $9 million in reserve funds, and we should return a portion of the meals tax revenue to promote those local businesses, as that was originally intended. And finally, let's actively seek events that increase community engagement and bring visitors to our town and local businesses.
Can you quit smoking while I'm here?
I apologize. I apologize. Sorry.
I hear fine. Yeah.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I think we need to strengthen our infrastructure and plan strategically for big projects of water and sewer upgrades. Is that better? We need a professional fire department in the Essex Elementary School, so we need to be strategic about how we're going to plan to fund those things. We need to rebuild regional trust. Essex and Manchester need to work together to support a shared school district. Infighting and a lack of leadership over the past several years, including around the current budget override, has been highly disappointing and frustrating. This is a town issue. Education is a town issue. It is not just a school issue. The future of our own elementary school is at stake, the district, and any chance we have of other regional efforts with our neighboring towns to share costs is at stake. We need to revisit opportunities for shared services within nearby towns. Everybody is struggling. Every town around us is struggling to make things work, so we need to regionalize more. And finally, I think we need to actually deliver some solutions for seniors. We do have an existing tax deferral program in place through the Assessors' Office, but the interest rate is 8%. I think we need to bring that down, and the town can vote to do that. We need to amplify the healthcare saving guidance offered by the Senior Center. The Senior Center does a fantastic job of working with seniors about how they can realize some savings with their healthcare. We need to amplify that, make sure people know about it. And then you can also establish a fund. It's called an Elderly and Disabled Taxation Fund, where taxpayers can check a box on their tax bill and make contributions to help alleviate the tax burden for seniors. Hamilton has something like that, but Nadaq and Hingham have very successful programs, and we should look at how to do that. I want to encourage voluntary-driven efforts to expand youth programming so that we can be guilt-rebuilding those programs. I'm good at organizing, and I get things done. I'm good at looking at you and saying, "I know what you're good at, and I need you to help me." And I've done that to a lot of people in this room. So, I'm good at communication. I listen. I like problem-solving. It's actually fun. So, while you might not always agree with where I come down, I'm always going to tell you how I got there. So, I want you to know that I'm going to be upfront and honest with you. It's going to take all the available talent and ideas to do the things we want to see here, and there are a lot of really talented people in town. So, I think I can help in that, creating an atmosphere that is more about what we can do than what we can't do.
Ruth, would you like to go next?
Thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Many of you know me, but for those of you that don't, my name is Ruth Perrine. I've lived in Essex for 20 years with my husband, David, who was born and raised here. I work in a compounding pharmacy in Beverly, and tomorrow will be my 20-year anniversary there. Like many residents in town, I never thought much about being part of town government. I only attended the annual town meeting and fall town meeting, in meetings when they affected me or someone I knew. About eight years ago, when the Public Safety Building Committee was working on the design of the new state-of-the-art public safety facility, I decided I would get involved, since this was an important project for the Police and Fire Department as well as the town. I attended every building committee meeting, and at each of these meetings, I made a public comment. During each of these meetings, I felt ignored, that none of my comments mattered. Nobody heard me. It was at that moment that I realized somehow, someday, I wanted to be part of town government so that I could be that person that listened when constituents had questions, recommendations, concerns, or complaints. You can imagine my surprise when I received a text message from Erin Kirchner of the Board of Health and Lisa O'Donnell of the Board of Selectmen at the time. They were reaching out to tell me that Lisa was stepping down as a selectman and that they both felt that I would be an amazing fit for this role, of course. I asked, "Why me?" They felt that my tenacity and perseverance through public comment for the public safety building would make me a great leader. They felt that I wouldn't back down from a fight. They also felt that I would do the right thing for the residents of Essex, even when no one was looking. I accepted that challenge. I ran for the Board of Selectmen in 2019, and I've been serving for the last six years. I find serving the town rewarding in so many ways. I take my civic duty seriously. I now serve on the Essex Elementary School Building Committee with Annie, the Strategic Planning Committee. I chair the Affordable Housing Trust, and now I'm seeking your vote to serve a third term on the Board of Selectmen. Over the last six years, we have accomplished so much, but there are still so many things left to complete. Some of our accomplishments include hiring some amazing professional staff, which include our new police chief, fire chief, town accountant, town clerk, and town planner. We've improved Centennial Grove, upgraded the water treatment plant, went to online permitting, replaced the Canoe Point seawall. These are just to name a few of the achievements we've accomplished over the last six years. If reelected, my goal is to continue the many things that we are working on, some of which include continuing to work with the Army Corps of Engineers to see that the dredging project is through completion and make sure that our local marinas are taken care of, to see the Centennial Grove upgrades completed, the extremely important water and sewer infrastructure upgrades, continuing to work with our call-fire department to keep that model viable for the next several years to come. And given our aging population, we need to work with our council on aging staff to be sure that our seniors have the resources that they need. My goal is to keep Essex affordable. I do not want to see for sale signs on every street because the taxes continue to increase. The most valuable thing that I bring to the table and will continue to bring, if reelected, is my fiscal responsibility for each and every constituent of Essex. I treat your dollars like they're my own.
We wanted to give the candidates an opportunity to weigh in on some of the key issues that are affecting the town. We have prepared five questions, and as Erica said, we did share them with the candidates in advance in order to help them present clear and thoughtful answers for you here tonight and those who will be viewing this later on. We will be allowing candidates approximately two minutes for each question and then allow them an opportunity for a 30-second follow-up to help it with any clarifying points that they wanted to make. So, I will pose the first question to you, Ruth. This is in regards to downtown revitalization. Essex has undergone significant changes in recent years with turnover of commercial properties in the downtown district. With the news of some new businesses coming to town, please share your vision of what is needed to keep Essex's downtown thriving now and in the future.
My vision of a thriving Essex downtown area is multifaceted. First, it's essential for the town and business leaders to plan for the challenges that rising sea level and more frequent, more severe coastal storms will bring to the area. Existing businesses and several new or planned businesses will be affected by worsening coastal flooding. I've recently supported the town's application to the U.S. DOT's Protect Grant Program to fully evaluate the expected impact of coastal flooding on the area and to conduct a full alternatives analysis to evaluate options to confront these challenges. The recent presidential administration change has paused the Protect Program, but we are hopeful that it will reopen soon. Second, it's important to balance the needs of businesses, many of which are in hospitality, with residents in and around the downtown area. This is why I've been very deliberate in trying to provide options for outdoor entertainment while respecting nearby residents. I can point to recent compromises with downtown establishments as successful recognition of what are sometimes competing needs. Third, I've supported the efforts of the Economic Development Committee to systematically improve and maintain the aesthetic quality of the downtown area for residents and visitors alike. While the attempt to install period streetlights was thwarted by poor engineering, more attention to the downtown beautification has been undertaken than ever before. New features include flower planters, new trash receptacles, and restored Paglia Park, which are coming this spring.
Thank you, Ruth. Annie, same question to you?
Sure. First, I want to address the elephant in the room, which is the entertainment policy. We need to revisit, and we need to find a compromise that works for businesses and residents, whether that's looking at the hours, specific days that amplified music is allowed, or sound measurement requirements. It may be a longer process that requires we test some things out. The uncertainty now is causing people to even hesitate to ask, and there's clearly a chilling effect that's happening. We aren't the first community to address this, and I think there's constructive ways forward, and we should consider them. To your question about how we support a thriving downtown, I'd like to expand that idea throughout Essex. Let's return some of the meals tax revenue to local businesses for marketing. With the disbanning of the merchants group, can we return some of that meals tax revenue to support the Essex Division of the Chamber, updating the Essex site and expanding visibility, not only for food and entertainment venues but other small businesses that offer great service and employ people locally? When we talk about Essex businesses and that core business area, we tend to focus on the business development between Main Street and 22, and I mean between 22 and Southern Ave. And I think we often lose sight of the businesses that extend towards Gloucester and Ipswich on 133 and on 22 and Southern Ave. We would benefit from engaging those businesses in conversations to extend what we consider the heart of Essex to include them. I've heard from businesses in town that we should benefit from more clarity and streamlining of permitting processes, and as far as the BOS can help, we should do that. And finally, one thing that arose in talking to both businesses and folks from the Manchester Essex Conservation Trust and the Cape Town Rowing Club is that we have amazing access to resources. And we should have the Chamber partner with these organizations and kind of build some events that we can bring people to town for weekends. You know, can we bring back that rowing thing, help them organize themselves, and then work with the businesses to make it a weekend? Can we do the same thing with what's happening with the people who bike on Southern Ave? Leadership should be more focused on what we can do and how we can make things work rather than what we can't. Let's try to help organize events, plan ahead, you know, the year ahead, and so that we can make, you know, exciting events happen through Essex and bring people into town, not just during those weekends, but other weekends. And I think we also need to just start talking about some of the great businesses that we have here and the services that we don't really talk about. There are a lot of good people doing good work, and we should help them.
Thank you. Any final points or issues that you would like to readdress? Okay, we'll move on.
As candidates go at Candidates Forum, you guys are awesome with regard to time management. I'm just going to say that. It's very true. And I know...
It's 120 words for a minute.
The next question that we have to ask has to do with budgetary, it's a budgetary of funding, municipal budgets. Given the town's reliance on property taxes as the major source of revenue and the limitations placed upon it by Proposition 2 and 1/2, how do you foresee funding budgets this year, given next week's annual town meeting and in future years? What do you feel are the most critical budgetary challenges facing Essex right now, and how do you propose to meet them? Annie, we'll start with you.
Sure. You've asked how we're funding budgets this year, and clearly there's a proposed override for the MERSD budget, and I'm fully in support of that. We've got to address this much-needed correction and preserve our instructional program. We're at risk of losing 22 teachers. My issue this year, and frankly, two years ago, is the segregation of educational expenses from the rest of town spending. Educational funding is as much a town obligation as is public safety and infrastructure, and we need to stop looking at the district and parents and kids and saying, "This is your problem. It's our problem." That said, I'm in support of the general town budget, Article 5, which reflects an increase of 5.6%. And if you look at some of the line items in that, you can see there's significant increases where, and they're necessary increases. We need to address the salaries for public safety people, but we need to start looking at things as a whole. And going forward, I think that we need to change how the Board of Selectmen addresses financial planning. It's apparent to me, and the primary reason I decided to run, that the three-person Board of Selectmen isn't guiding financial planning. Rather, they're learning about it from the Finance Committee. Let's remember that the Finance Committee is an appointed and advisory board. You are voting for one of us, and one of the big questions you've asked us is about budget. So, clearly, there's an expectation from voters that the Board of Selectmen has a major part to play in planning for these big expenses. We've got major items on our plate, replacing water and sewer pipes, whatever we plan to do with EES, what's going to happen with the sewer plant in Gloucester, and how we're going to plan for the fire and safety and staffing. And going forward, I'd propose a level-set meeting with the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee immediately after town meeting to establish what are the goals and objectives for this year and for several years out. We need to meet with departments with big asks, like the DPW, to identify the problems they need to solve and really listen to their ideas about how they're going to do it and how they're going to fund it. Those boards and departments really do know their stuff. Many of these people come from the industry that they serve, so they're experts in their field, and I think we need to give them the respect of that knowledge. They're elected by voters. That is their purview, so we need to respect the work that they do. And I also think we need to trust department heads to manage their budgets, and if they don't, we need to have them move along. I want to focus on collaborative solutions, long-term strategies in exploring regional or intermunicipal solutions, because none of the towns around us can go it alone anymore. It starts with approaching the process in good faith, establishing trust, and being willing to compromise.
Thank you, Annie. Ruth?
The municipal side of the town's budget has consistently operated on a labor increase of 2%, with expenses running between 1% to 2%, all of which is well within the limit set by Proposition 2 and 1/2. This year, in order to keep our all-call fire department in place for as long as possible, we have recommended increases beyond the typical 2% COLA. Without taking this approach, Essex would have to consider a full-time fire department, which is estimated to cost the town over $1 million annually. Funding public safety now and in the future is paramount, and much attention is being given in this area, including the appointment of a new police chief, who was chosen in part for his commitment to fiscal responsibility and transparency. Another budgetary challenge facing Essex is the school side of the town's budget, which has been a challenge for some time now. It is important to arrive at a solution that does not require municipal spending to stay artificially low in order to accommodate the school budget. A solid school district is essential to producing informed and articulate citizens, and I feel that we can continue to foster that type of excellence, even with perhaps educational program changes that may include class size increases, rotational offering of certain courses in other economies. However, it's important to note that any decisions regarding the Manchester Essex Regional School District falls under the purview of the seven elected officials of the school committee and not the Board of Selectmen.
Thank you very much. Are there any clarifications you'd like to make or any rebuttals?
Yeah, I just, I guess I want to address the Prop 2 and 1/2 issue. I mean, we have been, as a town, reluctant to exceed 2 and 1/2. And 2 and 1/2 is a requirement that makes you go to voters and ask for additional funds. And I don't, you know, we haven't had an override, operational override, in 20 years. I think we need to stop being afraid of asking people to pay what it costs to run our town. And I think we need to be honest about what's out, what do we have in front of us? It's important to fund public safety. It's important to have safe roads and water pipes and sewer grinder things. I mean, all that stuff's important. We got to plan for it, but we also got to lay it out in front of you and say, "Here's all the stuff we've got, and this is what it costs." We're all adults. I'm not spending that money. You're not spending, you're not going to Bonwit Teller, I don't even know if that's around anymore. But, you know what I'm saying? We're not spending this money. We're spending the money because these are services we require, and I just think that we need to be upfront and honest about what it costs, and we need to be adults about it. So, I just want to be clear. I don't think anyone's bad because we're spending money. I just think we need to be honest about it and solve the problem collectively.
And just a clarifying point. Annie said something in our opening statement about defining the role of the Board of Selectmen and in overstepping. But then in this most recent comment, we were talking about needing to meet with departments to understand the needs of those departments. And it's interesting, there are members of departments that feel that I overstep because I attend a lot of meetings. So, on the regular, I obviously go to the Board of Selectmen's meetings, I hope. I go to the Conservation Commission meetings, the Planning Board meetings, school committee meetings. If I have an opportunity, I go to the Board of Health meetings, the DPW Commissioner meetings. There is a reason. The Board of Selectmen is the executive branch. We make major decisions for all of the residents of Essex. And for me, to serve my constituents, I want to be educated. I want to understand what's going on in those departments. I want to sit in that DPW meeting. So, when they talk about the need for water and sewer upgrades, and it's going to cost $20 million, when the constituents reach out to me, I want to have those answers. I will say, I don't overstep. I realize that that's their purview. I try to triage. But sometimes you have constituents who say, when I triage, they say, "That particular employee is a little rough around the edges," or "I prefer not to reach out to them. Could you get me the answer?" So, this is how I see my role. I see my role as the person that wants to make sure I have the answers when somebody comes to me, which is why I attend the meeting. So, I don't see it as overstepping. I see it as education, and I see it as a way for me to protect all constituents or to be able to give them information.
Thank you, Ruth. We will move on to a question about coastal flooding. Ruth, this question will first go to you. You did address this slightly with the first question, but "The frequency of flooding along the causeway is increasing every year. Please share specific priorities to address this issue and increase our resiliency. What strategic ideas do you have to mitigate the threat of public safety response, affected businesses, and the greater community?"
Thank you. As noted in my response to the downtown revitalization question, "The ability of our downtown area to continue to support businesses and enjoyment for residents and visitors alike, real planning must be undertaken now. I've supported the effort to apply for federal funding to assess any and all alternatives for solutions hand-in-hand with businesses. While it is unfortunate that the Apple Street Roadbed Elevation Project to ensure public safety did not move forward, I am very cognizant of the numerous public comments received as part of the recent Hazard Mitigation Plan update process, asking for renewed emphasis on solutions for downtown flooding. The threat to public safety is still very real, and I stand behind my past advocacy of the Apple Street process. It is my hope that a future federal grant in conjunction with MassDOT will turn up new solutions in this area. Businesses and the greater community will benefit from the relationship that I've helped to forge with MassDOT, and I hope to make Essex the first community in the Commonwealth to benefit from close collaboration with MassDOT with respect to coastal flooding resilience planning."
Thank you, Ruth. Annie, same question to you?
Sure. Flooding is a problem. It's become worse in recent years. Our downtown is particularly vulnerable, and it's become both a public safety and economic issue. The town has taken steps to address these issues, participating in the Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Program, collaborating on the Great March Resiliency Planning Project, say that 10 times or five times, and participating in workshops with experts in other local communities. I think they've done a good job with that. These initiatives have helped identify vulnerabilities and prioritize actions such as salt marsh restoration and management to mitigate flooding impacts. There's still the issue of what to do about Apple Street as an alternative route, and the proposed culvert replacement was rejected by voters. I believe that we do need to solve the Apple Street culvert project, and we need that road as an alternative emergency conduit when the causeway floods. I do believe that the residents there understand the need and would be willing to work collaboratively on a solution, but I think we need some new voices at the table. Let's find a solution that's not so wide-scale but can still garner grant funding. Let's address some of the other concerns that Apple Street residents may have. They're not specific to the culvert but are adding to their uncertainty, such as the future of Apple Street as a causeway alternative. We need to develop a plan for the Apple Street property that the town purchased several years ago. When is the temporary road that will allow us to repair the dump bridge going to be addressed? Will there be a school on that site or something else? As a side note, I don't think that the town should be in the business of real estate. I don't think we're very good at it, and so I think we should make a plan for that Apple Street site and then, or sell it. You know, often with these issues, especially with Apple Street, I think that there are uncertainties that prevent solutions, and I think laying those all out on the table and helping us come to a solution is possible. We just need to kind of address the things that they're impacting where, what the solution is so that those people feel a little bit more certainty and comfort about the future of their properties.
Thank you, Annie. Any clarifying points either of you would like to make to answer that question?
I'm amazed at how much ground we're covering, and so quickly. The next question involves land use regulation. Last year, Essex voters rejected an ambitious townwide zoning that was presented at town meeting by the Planning Board, and it would have defined areas of residential and commercial
and commercial use. What are your thoughts pertaining to the need for comprehensive zoning in Essex, and how would you implement it? We're going to start with you, Annie.
Okay. It's fair to say that for most of us, our home is our greatest asset, and investment in threats to its value strike a fear, a kind of fear in homeowners. So I think it's reasonable for us to develop a zoning plan where residents feel like their assets are secure and are gaining value. And for business owners, they want consistency in the application of the law and for the laws to not adversely affect their business. The challenge for me, and I'm looking at Wes, is that zoning articles are very complicated, and I find myself really relying on the conversation at town meeting among people that I respect to help me better understand what's being asked and what the weaknesses of an article might be. And doing that at town meeting is just too late. And I don't think I'm alone in saying that planning board articles are very, very difficult to understand. Just take a look at the town warrant. So while the comprehensive zoning article was indefinitely postponed, it wasn't rejected, it was indefinitely postponed, I don't think that the motivating factors for proposing it are gone. We need to continue to make progress, and the Planning Board acknowledges that. To that end, I suggest that we start small and focus on areas of clear consensus. We need to be driven by the community through real engagement, clear communication, and opportunities for residents to shape the outcomes. Communication is really hard. It's hard to talk about that stuff, to make it understandable for people. And that's another area where I think we all could collectively help a little bit in kind of sharing what we're asking folks to do. We need to focus on protecting the character of Essex by preserving open spaces, neighborhoods, and the town's historic feel. And we need to support thoughtful, appropriate growth by allowing for needed housing, services, businesses, and businesses that fit our scale and values. Further, it's my understanding that we need a master plan, which is required by law and the process for which is owned by the Planning Board. A master plan helps a community manage growth and change, provides for predictable development, protects natural resources, and sets priorities for infrastructure. Kind of all the stuff that you've already asked us about tonight. We need all that. And from that, I think we can understand and plan for the economic and financial aspects of acting on that plan. And while most of this work falls on the Planning Board as a select person, I would see my role in facilitating communication and encouraging collaboration.
Thank you, Annie. Ruth?
The Planning Board is made up of seven elected officials who have purview over creating and/or amending zoning bylaws. Planning Board members are part of a municipal body responsible for guiding a community's physical development and land use. They play a key role in shaping the future of a town by reviewing development proposals, managing subdivisions, and bringing forth zoning recommendations. They are also supported by our new professional and experienced Town Planner Val Masard. These seven individuals answer to their constituents. When Planning Board members were receiving requests from residential, for residential zoning districts, they spent a lot of time working on bringing the information forward. The Planning Board meets twice a month in a public meeting. They held forums. They had public hearings in hopes of getting feedback and community engagement. It wasn't until the Planning Board was invited to a chamber event that a large contingent of our community made it clear that they were not in favor of restrictive zoning. I believe that the Planning Board Chair heard the concerns and realized that the Planning Board needed to start small and consider some of the ideas that were raised at the table to build consensus. As a member of the BOS, I would support the Planning Board putting articles on the warrant for voters to consider at town meeting. Many people moved to Essex because of the charm, the history, and the culture. Many people came to Essex for what it is, not what it could be. Many people don't want to see change. The question of how I would implement comprehensive zoning is not a question that a selectman should answer. Zoning is strictly the purview of the Planning Board.
Thank you. Any clarifications or rebuttals?
Good answer.
We're moving on. Our last and final prepared question is in relation to affordable housing. The lack of affordable housing and housing that is affordable throughout our region is a crisis. And according to the latest state report, Essex has 1,230 year-round housing units, with 35 units listed on the state's subsidized housing inventory, which equates to 2.85% of the town's housing stock, well under the 10% threshold for safe harbor under Chapter 40B. Please share your vision, including strategies, to create affordable housing in Essex. Ruth, to you first, please.
When the Strategic Planning Committee wrote its second iteration of the strategic plan, I was supportive of the continued development of affordable housing options in Essex. The planning process gave rise to the Essex Housing Coalition, which eventually advocated for something more formal. I supported the creation of an Affordable Housing Trust, which I now chair, and we are well on the way to having a housing production plan. I advocated at town meeting for funding the trust, and some of the funding is now supporting the HPP. I'm presently advocating within the HPP process for certain initial goals and the identification of certain priority affordable housing sites. Specifically, I'm advocating for small-scale projects for the possibilities offered by our downtown mixed-use zoning district, for the creative ways of funding projects that will be recommended by the Affordable Housing Trust, and for realizing the maximum benefit of future zoning initiatives and developers' incentives.
Thank you, Ruth. Annie, the question to you, please.
Sure. For seniors who want to downsize and stay here, for young families trying to buy their first home, for multi-generational residents, and for town employees, housing options in Essex are increasingly out of reach. I served on the, whatever that was, not Affordable Housing Trust, you just mentioned it.
The Coalition.
Coalition, yeah. That was pre-passage of the article at town meeting, and I now serve on the Board at Action, which is an organization focused on fuel assistance, housing, and other needs-based services in Gloucester and Cape Town. So I agree that Essex needs affordable housing. Big A, official housing, and small A, kind of accessible housing for working families and seniors. It's been a long process for the Affordable Housing Trust to develop the housing production plan and to do some of the foundational work to really get started. And I say that honestly, that they're doing yeoman's work. It's a slog, and I commend you for the work that you guys are doing. Relative to what actions we can facilitate in town, we can partner with private developers to develop housing. We can rehabilitate existing homes to convert to affordable housing. We can engage with property owners on incentives that might make them put some or all of their properties into a deed restriction. And then we can work with property developers to ensure that new developments beyond a certain threshold or number of units designate a percentage of units as affordable housing, or they pay a fee into the Affordable Housing Trust. So for example, Gloucester requires that a development of six to nine units provides one affordable unit, or they pay a fee to the Affordable Housing Trust. And for developments of 10 or more, there are specific requirements for low-income households and very low-income households. So we could do something like that. As a member of the Board at Action, I have seen how adept that organization is at finding opportunities. I mean, every meeting I go to, they've got some great new project on board. So, you know, the members that are from the other towns, Essex, Manchester, and Rockport, are really in envy of what is happening in Gloucester because they're really making it happen. So I just think that it would be really good for us to work with them. They've offered to come and talk to these smaller towns about some ways of kind of implementing some quick wins, and I think we should take advantage of that because we're part of that organization. You know, the town of Essex is part of that service area, and we should avail ourselves of that expertise to build some affordable units, so.
Thank you, Annie. Any additional points or clarifying you'd like to offer?
Sure. Just on the affordable housing side, we've actually, at our meetings, we've had Action come. We've also had Habitat for Humanity come, and we've had others, I can't think of all of them off the top of my head, but we've had many different organizations come before the Board or the Trust to talk about affordable housing options in Essex. But at the end of the day, none of these were viable until we had a housing production plan. So we were meeting once a month with the goal of being aggressive on getting to the point of having affordable housing, but we found that we were hitting roadblocks because we didn't have the map to actually execute the idea. So until we have the HPP formed and voted on by the Board of Selectmen and the Planning Board, it was, it's difficult to move forward. But we are obviously in the process, and we are working with MAPC, who's helping to write the housing production plan, along with our Town Planner Val Masard. And their next order of business is actually a bylaw that will make it so that when developers come to town, they either have to provide affordable housing units, or they have to pay into the town's coffers for the Trust so that we can develop our own affordable housing units through that funding process.
Thank you. I have to say, this concludes sort of the prepared questions part of our format. And I will say, I'm very, very impressed, and I think everybody here is impressed, at the wide, wide spectrum of important issues, that the two of you have genuinely put a tremendous amount of thought and thoughtful answers. Thank you. Thank you. So for the next part of our, the next part of our program is going to be questions from the audience. We'd like you to sort of keep it brief and respectful, of course. And we also have some questions that were submitted to us in anticipation of this from the community. So we'll intersperse those as well as they could become relevant. And Mark, it's your show, my friend.
Questions?
So any questions, you can just raise your hand, and Mark will come over with the microphone.
As a fellow member, and I'm going to ask Ruth this question, how easy is it to be a select board member and having, being able to answer the right question for all of the constituents in town?
Jeez, I will put me on the spot. Being a selectman is not an easy job. You're put on the spot a lot, whether you're just going to the dump to throw away your trash and you get a question, or you're in the post office and you get stopped. Having a lot of information all of the time is not easy. One of the things I say to people is, if I don't have the answer, I'll get it for you. But it's a lot of work. Like I mentioned, I attend a lot of meetings for education and to have the facts for the constituents. It's, frankly, I often joke, it's a full-time job. And if it were truly a paying full-time job, it'd be great, but at the $1,000 a year we get, not so much. I put in probably 20 hours a week as a selectman. I sit at my desk many late nights. I get up early in the morning. I take a lot of phone calls, and I attend a lot of meetings. So what the public sees every other Monday night for two hours is just the tip of the iceberg. So it's a lot.
I think we had another question in here.
Ruth, I just was asking, what effort have you put towards the town in terms of regionalizing other town services? And then Annie, since you're not a select board member, I'm wondering what ideas you had for other services in terms of regionalization for our town?
Do you want to go first?
Yeah, sure.
Sure. I'll take it. So police and fire is something that we have talked about in the past, and I know that there has been reluctance to do that, but I do think we need to not let go of that exploration. So I do think we need to look at public safety. I remember years and years ago when Ray Randall was a selectman, and he was, there were two guys writing articles about how many towns in New England all had fire trucks. And they were saying, this is nuts. Nobody else in the country does this, but everybody in the New England has, has to have their own pumper, their own whatever, all these different things. And he was really trying to look at like ways to kind of share those kinds of things. I think there's ways of looking at DPW sharing, and I think we already do that. They share some equipment things. I was talking to Pam about, Pam Bowden, who's the Chair of the, or the Superintendent, about, you know, facilities keeps coming up in collaborative meetings. We used to have collaborative meetings with the Town of Manchester, the School Committee, and the Town of Essex, and facilities kept coming up as like, schools are not good at this. You know, can the towns kind of help us out, or can we do some things there? So I think there's a lot of different opportunities, and not always necessarily with Manchester. So, you know, there's the Collinsport, we should revisit it, but I think there's been some really positive things that have happened. Somebody else was telling me that maybe it was, it might have been the senior center, but there are opportunities out there, Antonella, that I think that we should keep exploring because Hamilton, Wentworth, Manchester, Rockport, we should, a couple of years ago, Rockport approached the district about regionalization. You know, is there a way that we could look at that? Can we keep their, can they keep their elementary schools? Maybe they keep, send their high school students here. They're struggling, too. So then there are ideas about at the district level, can you, can you regionalize some of those classes that, you know, we, our small populations? I mean, there's, there's a lot of different ways we can do that, and not always regional efforts, but they're shared kind of efforts, and not necessarily that formal regionalization agreement. So sorry to blob on, but yeah.
So there are a lot of things that we currently do regionally. We have the Manchester Essex Regional School District. We have Essex Tech. We have the wastewater treatment with the City of Gloucester. Eastern Veteran Services, IT with Danvers, North Shore Regional 911, the Cape Town Community Wildfire Protection Plan, shared patrol of Shebaco Lake with Hamilton officials. We have a regional public health nurse that that position hasn't been filled. It's been a little while. We're, we've still been trying to fill that. The regional public health inspector, regional public health social worker. And in my six years on the Board, I've also met with Becky Jakes, Ann Harrison, Brian Solacey, Greg Fetterspiel, and Jake McNeely. We've talked about regionalizing things such as the Council on Aging Senior Center, whether it be programs or shared van services. We have a building, they didn't, they do now, but we had the building, they had the vehicles. We were trying to see if we could make something like that work. We've talked about animal control. We've talked about the Harbor Division. Believe it or not, we talked about the police chief because we're, we were both in kind of having a police chief retire. We talked about shared equipment, the possibility of a ladder truck. We actually, just in the last four weeks, spoke with Manchester about a shared mechanic because the DPW brought concerns about needing a mechanic. So these are things that we're always looking at. It doesn't always happen. Just recently, we had, we did have a shared service with Georgetown. We were sharing their conservation agent. We had them one day a week. They had that person four days. It didn't work out. We are currently talking to Rowley, who's in the throes of hiring a conservation agent. We're hoping something like that will work out. One of the things that we have to consider when we look at these things is that we have 95 employees on payroll here in Essex. Of those 95 employees, 35 of those employees are full-time. The remaining employees are part-time. They do not have pensions. They do not have health insurance. When we start looking at regional things by way of employees, typically that means full-time. So Essex finds itself that doing these regional things costs us more than to go it alone on a part-time basis. So we need to look at these things on a case-by-case basis because we could lose control on spending or decision-making. That's a concern. Just commenting back on Annie's, Annie's comment about public safety, we, you know, we have mutual aid agreements with our surrounding communities, all of our surrounding communities, Hamilton, Wentworth, Ipswich, Manchester, Gloucester, Rockport. And we mutual aid. We have line boxes. We have automatic response. We, we support each other. What we find is that Essex supports our surrounding communities more than Essex calls for support. We have a police department, that's $1.6 million. Manchester's police department is $2.1 million. They need a new building. We don't necessarily want to endeavor into building another building. Our fire department, fire and ambulance, is $560,000. Their fire department is $1.9 million. So when you start talking about regionalizing these things, you have to be conscientious that we're merging, we're becoming a partnership. And with that partnership becomes those, takes on those expenses, as well as buildings. Manchester's looking at needing a whole public safety facility. They need a new fire station. It floods. Their police department floods. They're talking about a town hall. They're talking about a ticket of $250 million of infrastructure upgrades. Sure, cost sharing for Manchester would be great, but I'm not so sure that the town of Essex can necessarily afford that at this time. So we just have to be cautious when we talk about what we're going to regionalize and what the best approach is.
Other questions? If you could just identify yourself, please.
Brian Grassler, Dory Chode. This year, the town general budget is going up about 5.6%. And there's a couple of major factors that are allowing that to happen. One is because there's money in the override, that's freed levy capacity that might not normally be there. And the other is that there's a couple of kind of one-time cash expenditures happening, about $150,000 in overlays returned. And the, even though it's for the schools, it doesn't, because it doesn't count against the capacity, 50,000 or so in school stabilization fund that was used. So that's So, that's about 200,000 in kind of one-time expenses that are, don't count against Proposition Two and a Half nor allowing us to kind of, but we're still kind of spending up to the levy capacity to get this 5%, 0.6% increase. What is the plan next year to maintain the salary for the firemen that we're having this year and getting all these things that we're adding this year on the back of that cash? What's the plan next year to maintain that? Thanks.
Is that question for myself or for Annie? I would say that the plan is likely, the need for an operational override to be able to continue funding those obligations.
Other questions? Maybe one for Annie?
I'll help you sell it.
Where that went was to Ruth. Is this question to Annie? It is. To Annie? Or to both? Anyone for Annie, just to keep it fair. Okay. And just identify yourself, please.
I'm Shelley Bradbury. The projections of the school budget will go from 32 million this year to 40 million by fiscal year 2030, which means Essex residents will have their taxes increased each year for the foreseeable future. With the government dismantling the Education Department and cutting federal grants, the state will have limited money, if any, to give to schools. My question is, to keep Essex physically sustainable and the fabric of our community whole, what are the strategic steps each of you would take to help cover the school's budget and the burden taxpayers will be asked to pay each year?
You want me to start?
Sure.
Sure. So, you know, I was on School Committee for a long time and we've had fiscal, you know, financial strains throughout that time. We had a collaborative group that would meet throughout the year, two reps from Manchester, two from the School Committee, two from Essex. You also did this work. It was very collaborative. You walk into that room and everybody throws the problems on the table. This is what we got going on, this is what we have. And you work together. It was very, very positive and constructive. We're not doing that now and we need to get back to it. There are two Finance Committee members who are on that Number Cruncher Committee or Group and we need to get a Board of Selectmen person back at that table. I don't know what the future of the budget is because this year we had an increase of more than 20% for insurance. You know, these things pop up. So, I think that you need to kind of try to do some five-year planning and I think that Pam and Michelle have got some tools to do that. But I also think we need to sit down and say, what can we give up in order to be able to do the things that Essex needs to do and Manchester? Manchester has this heavy load as well. And I know that you're aware of that too. You guys have been meeting with the Chairs. But, you know, it's, I can't tell you what the solution is because I don't know that it's going to be 40 million by this date. You know, it really does depend on the year and what happens with forces that are really out of our control. But I will tell you that you've got to come to the table with honesty and in good faith and you can work it out. It has, I have great faith in the people who are serving on our School Committee and the people who are administrators there. So, I know we can find a solution, I just don't know what it is. So, I just think it's, for me, it's about process because I know that the process has been successful in the past. And there are people who used to be on Finance Committee here, people who are on School Committee who saw it happen and saw it work. So, I am confident we can keep going. I think we need to be creative too. And we've got to give stuff up.
Okay, we have another question here.
Ruth was going to answer the question.
That's okay. There's a lot to unpack there. And what I would say to Annie's point is that there are representatives from the Town of Essex, the Town of Manchester, and the School District that meet in closed-door meetings in collaboration. And I will say that this override this year actually came as a shock to me because, or the need for it, because at the beginning of the budget cycle, when we were meeting behind closed doors, the district realized that the goal for the Town of Essex was to get to the build of the Essex Elementary School. And in order to get there, we didn't want to burden the constituents with overrides into the foreseeable future, knowing that we were going to have a debt exclusion by way of the school. So, I was a little taken back when not only was there a need for an override, but such a big override. How to fund it? The answer is that we do live within Prop Two and a Half and absolutely, it's from 1980 and we realize that we can do overrides to fund things. True statement. However, our levy capacity is under $400,000. We have 1,249 homes here in Essex and those 1,249 homes fund everything. We have a $22 million budget and those 1,200 homes have to fund that $22 million. So, we have to be strategic in the way that we spend that money. The other issue is that the projections which came from the school, those came from Michelle, we are at $32 million this year and it, and Shelley, you are right, that the projection for fiscal 30 is $40 million. Based on the trajectory of level funded, with the exception of contractual obligations, level headcount, and level enrollment, we are, that's the projection and we will be looking at an override for the next four years, an annual override for the next four years. So, I don't know that that helps, but that's just kind of truth and disclosure of what we are looking at.
You got a question?
Tom DeMeo, 35 Water Street. Annie, you made the comment that the health insurance costs went up 25 and a half percent and it just popped up 25 and a half.
No, 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 I don't think it's 25.
I do.
Did I say 20? I thought I said some, I thought I said more than 20, but I think it's.
It's 25 and a half.
I think that that's a new, there's a new number and Brian, you.
There is a new number. I thought it was 23 or something.
Yeah, there's a new number.
And you are talking at the phone.
Oh, shoot, sorry. It went down. That was a number at a certain point and then they reduced it slightly and I think it's like 23 or something like that.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, well, I got the number from the budget book on the Merce site.
And now, I think that was when it was printed, but I think that Michelle did some work and I can't remember what exactly it was, but she was able to get it down a little bit lower.
22.95.
There you go. Jody knows.
Okay, so, why?
Why?
Yeah, because this is a, just, my perspective is that this is a regulated health insurance state. We don't have variable rates. We have fixed rates set by the state.
Yeah, I think Jody can tell you what the town's rate was this year, but the district experienced some catastrophic illness. Catastrophic illness. There's some folks with cancer. And that had an impact on our rate this year. So, you know, yes. That is the answer.
Okay.
Sorry, I mean.
Don't think so.
I'm not sure we're here tonight to answer that question. That's a very complex question and not really the responsibility of the candidates to know the exact, when it's in excess of 20, that is catastrophic and so there are factors at play. I believe it's also 20 for the town employees as well.
19.92, you're correct.
Oh, thank you, Jody, for keeping me honest. Any other questions? We're getting to 7:30, but, okay.
Am I allowed to ask a question? I'm a Manchester resident.
Are moderators?
I think so. I think if everybody is.
If you could just identify yourself.
She's identified herself as a Manchester, as an outsider, so.
And is this our final question, Erica?
I think we can take one more question if people wanted, but otherwise, I feel like we've gotten a lot out of it and we should wind it down, but we'll see after this.
Okay, thank you.
So, I come in peace. I'm a Manchester resident. My name's Lindsay Banks. I live at 44th Street in Manchester. So, this last Monday, Manchester passed the school budget with 93% support. At the town meeting, our Finance Committee Chair, Sarah Melish, expressed concern that the contingency budget, the one with all the cuts in it that you might have been hearing about, like 22 full-time employees, blah, 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 would, she used the word destroy the school program. And via a follow-up email, she said, we're losing our patience with the Essex Finance Committee and Select Board because at the 11th hour, they don't seem to be supporting the override. Now, I'm hearing there might be support for an override. So, you know, it feels a little bit like the relationship between our towns is fraying and this makes me sad because I think that.
Is this a question?
Oh, I'm getting, I'm getting to it, but.
Yes, please.
My question is.
Hey, everybody, take a breath.
Please do ask a question that's appropriate for the candidates for the Board of Selectmen in Essex.
Absolutely. So, I want to see our district partnership be successful. I think all our kids benefit from it, our towns, residents benefit from it, our property values.
Lindsay, ask a question, please.
So, I'm wondering, how will you work to nurture and repair the district partnership for the benefit of both of our towns?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Who would like to take that question first?
Sure. So, we have a 25-year-old agreement with the Town of Manchester. We've had a 25-year agreement with the Town of Manchester and all told, it's a successful district. We are often commended for the strength of our program. Our kids go to, onto secondary or post-secondary education and they do very well. So, I think, I want to kind of put this in perspective. This is a blip and it's because our apportionment piece has been heavier on Essex. And I can remember when it was heavier on Manchester and man, you wouldn't believe the conversations we were having. So, it fluctuates back and forth. I do think there's some problems with, you know, perceptions and I do think we need to fix that. But I believe in the long term, and I have very good friends in Manchester who have great respect for our town. And I think we're going to, you know, we're going to get through this. It's going to be fine. And I don't want to be doom and gloom about it. I want us to pass this override because we sign an agreement to be a partner and we need to be a good partner. And we have been. Let me tell you something, we've built two schools in that town. I want our school. We need to fight for what we need and we need to fund our school program. It's, it is the thing that gives our kids hope.
Ms. Angaharo, please.
I don't know. I mean, I would ask that question.
That sounds like.
I think, I'm not threatening anything. Let me just be clear, I'm not threatening anything. I think that there is a feeling in Manchester that if you don't pass this, if you don't pass overrides, how are you going to, how are you going to build a building? I mean, I think that that's a fair question to ask. We have already built two buildings there. Why would we jeopardize that at this point? I guess I just don't understand the strategy. So, I do believe in a strong region. I believe we're going to pass this override and I am a very hopeful person, although sometimes I can be very cynical. But I do think we're going to get through this. I think it's a strong district and I believe that the Town of Manchester, we can have a healthy relationship and expand our opportunities with them. So, I am.
Thank you, Annie. Do you have anything to add to that, Ruth, please?
Yep, absolutely. So, I agree with Annie. I think that the district is a solid district. I think that the relationship that was formed 25 years ago was an important one and it continues to be an important one today. I hear the concerns about a fractured relationship, but to Annie's point, I recall those many years where Manchester was on the other side of apportionment and they were begging and pleading and kicking and screaming about needing relief in the budget. And we made concessions to the point where a couple of, six years ago, when I was first a selectman, the Manchester, Town of Manchester came to us, not the district, the town came to us and said, can you please say that you can't afford this budget this year because we can't afford it? We need you to make, to let them know you can't afford it so that they back down the budget number. And we said, absolutely not. We have the funds set aside, we are prepared to pay, we are not going to do that. And we moved forward. Because Manchester has been on the low end of apportionment for the last five years, they've been able to build their levy capacity, their excess levy capacity, which is why they had $900,000 in excess capacity to be able to fund this budget year without an override. Next year will likely be very different for them. One of the concerns I hear from the constituents in our community is that, you know, the district went from 1,500 students to 1,100 students. That's 400 students, it's 25%. But the district was never right-sized. We didn't lose the same number of teachers for the amount of students. If you have a company and you, you know, make glasses and you have 100 employees and you make 100 glasses and all of a sudden you're only selling 50 glasses, you get rid of 50 employees. And I'm not suggesting, you know, that you're getting rid of 50 employees. I'm simply saying that sometimes you need to right-size things because in corporate America, you wouldn't keep spending if you weren't making the money, right? So, there is a, there's a crossover over there. I do think that unfortunately, we're still going to be on the high side of apportionment for the next couple of years because of the enrollment numbers. And that is going to be difficult. It's going to be an uphill battle, but I think that we're going to see some change next year because of Manchester's likely position of needing an override and the fact that they've used all their excess capacity this year.
Okay, well, I think, I have to say thank you again very much and it's hard to think of right now, but in an hour and 10 minutes or an hour and five minutes, we have covered coastal flooding, land use regulation, affordable housing, downtown business vibrancy, and budgetary items. It's amazing. And then, yes, the school, I know that it's being over, you know, the next week's town meeting looms large and as a result, this last question was what it was, but thank you, thank you, thank you. And thank you for coming. This is wonderful.